2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. And tonight, we're very blessed to have Reverend Noel from St. Joseph's Catholic Church, actually Father Noel. And we just in the opening prayer, and then we have firefighter Thomas Polix from Station 17 giving these in the place of allegiance. For those who are willing and able, please stand. Let the Father go first. There you go.
Gracious God, we ask your blessing upon the leaders of our county and upon the citizens they serve. We pray that you would be at work in all of us on behalf of peace, mercy, and justice, and that we would heed your calling to love all people as you love us. With spirit of grace, feel us so that all we do would in service to the greater good at work in our world. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as you make decisions that might affect the citizens of Cobb County. And continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We seek your blessings on the task before us. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality. We gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral, as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. With this and your holy name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. Thank you, sir. Okay, we have a couple admin actually have to take here first. For those who are following it at home and here tonight, we'll be pulling consent item number 24 from the agenda, and then be adding, I'll be making a motion here to add a non-agenda item, creating a new board commissioners tab. So I believe that one is yours, Commissioner Ott.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to the regular agenda under commissioners, board of commissioners tab, I forget the item number, will be item number one, which would be to approve a resolution pertaining to House Bill 302.
We have second?
Second.
No, no, we're just 302. Right. Any discussion? Call a question? And it passes four to zero, Commissioner Cupid is absent, but she'll be here with the shortlist. Okay, with that, we have some presentations. And the first one tonight, I would like to have the board jump me down the floor. On January 1st of this year, Commissioner Ott, Commander, celebrated his 10th year as Commissioner. So I just thought it'd be really nice to have the board down in front of us along with having his lovely and wonderful life duty by his side. And I'm probably getting in trouble here, but my understanding is you're his best friend. So you're sailing buddy, so we can be safe there. So this is just a, it's not just, it is a certificate of appreciation for Cobb County government, and you're hereby awarded, presented this award in grateful recognition for 10 years of loyal service to the citizens of Cobb County, Georgia. This first day of January 19, 2019, signed by myself and the county manager. With that, congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you. This really needs to have Judy's name on it, because she's the one that puts up with all the phone calls. She thinks it's attached to my ear. And James wants to always go sailing, and I'm like, I can't, I gotta go to county. So thank you, and thank you.
Congratulations. So I'll turn this over to Bill Bookman, who's our finance director. We're all gonna go back down, that's correct.
All right, Latona and Joe, will you guys come up as well? So tonight, we're here to present the 2018 Silver Eagle Award on behalf of the Cobb County management team. This award is presented to a member of the Cobb County management team who was selected by election through his or her peers. The reward program recognizes a team member who's demonstrated teamwork, exhibited outstanding leadership among the department managers' team during the calendar year. So we had several nominations this year, and I just wanna read just a quick description about the award winner. This person always demonstrates a positive attitude, upbeat, and great sense of humor in stressful situations. He's always there to support his team and as well as the management team. So on behalf of the Silver Eagle Committee and the Board of Commissioners, we'd like to present this year's winner, Stephen White. If you will come on up. Congratulations, sir, and we have some special guests here for you tonight. I'm gonna give you the mic.
I feel like I've won an Oscar. Well, it might be the first time ever, I don't know what to say. But it has been a challenging year on the health front of the household, as many of you probably know. So this is very, makes it all the much more special, and I could not have done this without the people that I'm very, very fortunate, and that is in the face of adversity, and that is because of the people that I work for and the people that I work with. And so our county manager, the Board of Commissioners, just this week I told Yvonne, Baba Ott was asking about you, and she said, the Commissioner, and I said, there's only one. Baba. The Board of Tax Assessors, the other agency and department head, Sam Heaton offered to do yard work for me, I guess the offer on that is probably ticking. But everybody has, yeah, yeah. It's been very, very fortunate to work with a great management team at the assessor's office, and Eddie Cannon, who sat with me at the hospital till the middle of the night when Yvonne was in surgery and held my hand. And so I work with some phenomenal people, and so my family is forever indebted to not just the people that work at the assessor's office, but the managers and this board and the county manager and everyone else. So I thank you very much, really means a lot. Thank you.
So Eddie, you're not getting out of the picture, so come on up.
Let me just get the family up here, and Tom, you get the fireplace here. You give the good Oscar grip on that thing. All right, here we go. Three, two, hang on. There you go. One. Thank you. Congratulations. We welcome you. Let me just, we can still just stay down there. Stay down.
Let's just have our meeting down here.
This is one of those nights where you just wanna have the presentations, then just go home. It's all good news. So I'd like to get Representative Earl Earhart and his wife, Representative Earhart, to come up here, please. You'll always be a representative, always. Good to have you both. We'd like to, obviously many of you know Representative Earl Earhart, and you're soon to gonna know the other Representative Earhart, but he has done amazing things for this county, and as I told him earlier tonight, there's so many things we could have honored him for tonight, but I'd like to read this proclamation on behalf of the board. It's just one of the things that he has done to make this county great. Whereas State Representative Earl Earhart retired at the end of 2018 as the longest-serving Republican in the Georgia House of Representatives, he was born in Miami and has lived in Cobb County since 1964, and graduated from the University of Georgia with a degree in political science in 1981. Whereas Earl Earhart was first elected to the House of Representatives in 1988 and represented District 36, which included parts of Northwest Cobb for 30 years, his goals were to build a better economy, keep residents safe, improve education, and promote family values. Over three decades, Representative Earhart worked to improve Cobb County and our state, including championing funding for our libraries, and whereas, as a member of the House Appropriations Committee and chairman of the Higher Education Subcommittee, Representative Earhart served as a major legislative advocate for funding of the Georgia Public Library Service Capital Outlay Grant, which included Cobb projects funded through this grant, and special purpose local option sales tax, including the Sule Mill Library and Cultural Center, and a major renovation of the Charles D. Switzer Library in Marietta. And whereas, Representative Earhart understood that library capital projects would be extremely beneficial to education in Cobb County and the state for generations to come. In its first year of operations, the Sule Mill Library offered a wide range of public programs on the creative arts, author events, and public meetings. And therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor the public service of Representative Earl Earhart and thank him for his tireless efforts to ensure Cobb County has state-of-the-art library services and facilities. We appreciate, more than we can say, the tremendous effort, collaboration, commitment, passion, and loyalty on behalf of this county and state during the past 30 years, given under our hand as 26th day of February 2019, signed by all members of the Board of Commission.
Thank you very, very much, Chairman. Hardworking members of this commission, you've all been doing so much for Cobb County, and I'm just humbled and grateful that you saw fit. County Administrator Hosack, thank you for your 30-plus years of friendship as well. But libraries are so special and so important, and for those who don't know, Cobb's got the best libraries in the entire state of Georgia. We have the best people who run them, and they are really a jewel of our community. And I was given a great opportunity to help support those in my many roles, especially in appropriations, and I was more than happy to help, because that's our future, the children and the people who are able to access all of the wonderful things in our Cobb libraries. So I'm thrilled for this. I'm glad to be retired, and I love this county and I love the people in it, and thank you very, very much.
Could I ask the Northeast Cobb Business Association to come up, and Chief Kreider? This is a very special group here tonight. I'm a charter member of the Northeast Cobb Business Association, and they have a 5K9 race that we initiated six years ago? Five? Five years ago? And every year, the race generates enough money to buy a police dog or a service dog for, we've had Cobb County Police recipients, we've had the sheriff, the school system, autistic child with, whose parents were, one was a teacher and one's a school resource officer. And last year, we had a veteran that suffers from PTSD, we donated a service dog for him. And with the additional money that we had after the service dog was purchased, we, the Northeast Cobb Business Association is proud to donate $2,000 to the Cobb County Fire Fund tonight for masks for animals that are rescued from fires. So y'all know my love for canines, so I thought this is a very fitting opportunity to help out our firefighters and our four-legged friends, cats and dogs. This is actually a picture from a fire in District 2 a couple year, year and a half ago, where they actually used the masks for some cats that were rescued from a fire. Director Heaton, would you like to come up with us as well, please? So I'm gonna turn it over to the President, Jay.
Well, it's a real honor and a privilege to be here tonight, and as President of Northeast Cobb Business Association, we are thrilled to contribute to the community in this way. But the brains of this operation is standing next to me, and I would love for Frank to just share his heart, and, there you are, sir.
Well, thank you. I have the pleasure of serving on the Board of the Northeast Cobb Business Association, and we came up with this idea to help our community. For those of you who do golf tournaments, you know, that's not really a community thing. I hate to say it, but we did golf tournaments for a while, and that's the hardest work I've ever done for the least amount of money. If it rains, you're done. But we decided we'll do something community. Our race is in early June, 2nd Saturday, and it's at Piedmont Church. What a gracious bunch of people they are at Piedmont Church. And just so you know, it won't take any time, you gotta know this, this year on June the 8th, we're hosting the 5K9, and our former district attorney asked me, did I know about service animals for children, abused children, abused seniors, and how they have to testify sometimes in court, and how nervous and how high their anxiety is? And I said, well, you've helped me for the last five races, I think we can help you this time. So the proceeds for this year's race will go to the Cobb District Attorney's Office for children and for senior abuse, so we're very proud to do that. So thank you for your support, and thank you for allowing us to come and support our community this way. So thank you so much.
Rick Sands with ARS.
Roseanne Hall with Atlanta Communities.
Vicki Agajanian with LGE Community Credit Union.
Renee Garra, Principal of Mountain View Elementary School.
Kim Lehner with Southeastern Engineering.
Elizabeth Mavady, Assistant Superintendent, Cobb County School District for Elementary Schools.
Frank Wiggington with the Northeast Cobb Business Association.
I'm Jay Street, ASC Group.
Steve Crowley from Piedmont Church.
Mike Flowers with Celebrity Ballroom Dance Studio, formerly Cobb Fireman.
So thank you all for being here and for this wonderful donation, it will really help a lot, and we'll keep you posted, and everybody come join us for the race in June. Yeah. They've already given the real check to Chief Kreider.
I'd like Amy Bonner and Jimmy Geese to join me, please.
Thank you, Commissioner. One of the greatest rewards that anyone can receive is to be recognized by your peers, and most of us, if we receive that recognition once in a lifetime, it's a good thing. This past year, one of our staff, Ms. Amy Bonner from the Lost Mountain Tennis Center, has received two such of those awards. One is from the USTA Georgia, where she received the Iberia Bank Tennis Professional of the Year, and then low and behold, a month later, from the Georgia Professional Tennis Association, she received the Community Outreach Award for her acing autism program. It is the great programs that Amy runs out at the Lost Mountain Tennis Center, that's the reason why she received this award. But she doesn't just stay at Lost Mountain Tennis Center, she also initiated an after-school program down at Wild Horse Creek Park called Tiger Tennis. It's the TAO middle school Tigers, Bingo Tigers, where she goes in after school and helps those kids learn tennis. She also does the acing autism, she's, she has all types of junior development programs at the Lost Mountain Tennis Center, and she has special events out the wazoo, she has them all the time. So we're very proud of Amy, we're proud of what she, what she does, we're proud of her ambassadorship on behalf of Cobb County and on behalf of the Cobb County Parks Department. So I believe Commissioner Gamble has something she's gonna read for you.
Yes, thank you. On behalf of the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, we'd like to give you a certificate of recognition. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulate you on your dedication and professionalism demonstrated at the Lost Mountain Tennis Center. We applaud and commend your outstanding leadership and requisition for the 2018 Georgia Professional Tennis Association Community Outreach and the Iberia Bank 2018 Georgia Tennis Professional of the Year on the 26th day of February 2019. Thank you.
Okay, so we have two more presentations, but Commissioner Cupid, who's on her way from the Capitol, would like us to delay those until after we do public comments. So with that, let's go into our next part of the meeting, which has to do with public hearings.
I'm Chairman and Commissioners, we have two public hearings we would like you to consider this afternoon. The first public hearing for consideration is to request that the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing for the proposed closure and abandonment of a portion of Pebblebrook Lane in Cobb County, Georgia, determined that said right-of-way serves no substantial public purpose, and authorize the disposition of same by quitclaim deed to the adjoining owner, Beazer Gain LLC, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Okay, just sort of like to go over the ground rules. Unlimited number of speakers, each speaker gets three minutes. Please let us know who you are, where you live. And with that, I now open this public hearing for the proposed closure and abandonment of a portion of Pebblebrook Lane, located lot 394, the 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia. Would anyone like to address this issue? Would anyone like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I now declare this public hearing closed, and I believe this one's for a vote, right?
Yes, sir.
So this is in Commissioner Cupid's district, but I'll go ahead and make a motion that we accept the recommendation as stated for the closure and abandonment of a portion of Pebblebrook Lane located lot 394, the 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Cupid excused absence.
Thank you, sir. Our second request is to ask that the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing for the proposed closure and abandonment of Future Street, and determine that said right-of-way serves no substantial public purpose, authorize the disposition of same by quitclaim deed to the adjoining owners, Richard D. Henry and Vismarj Benavides and Teresa J. Benavides, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Okay, same rules, three minutes, unlimited number of speakers, and just let us know who you are and where you live. So that, I now declare this public hearing open for the proposed closure and abandonment of Future Street located in landlot 283 of the 16th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia. Would anyone like to speak to this issue? Would anyone like to address the Board on this issue? Seeing none, I now to close this public hearing, closed. And Commissioner Burl, I believe this is in your, in your area, right?
Yes, thank you, sir. Motion to approve.
Have a second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Cupid excused absence.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Erica. The third public hearing will be led by Michael Hughes from Community Development.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, County Manager. We are requesting this evening that you conduct the second and final public hearing in order to solicit comments and input from the public regarding some proposed amendments to the official code of Cobb County. By way of background, these code amendments cover the following sections. Chapter 2, Administration; Chapter 6, Alcoholic Beverages; Chapter 10, Animals; Chapter 58, Floods; Chapter 86, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions; Chapter 90, Parks and Recreation; and then the final chapter, Chapter 134, Zoning. Just by way of background, to refresh our memory on some public notification dates, the Board had a work session back on January 22nd, 2019. We also had a public hearing on January 22nd as well. The Planning Commission had its public hearing on February 5th, and then tonight is our second and final public hearing as it relates to these code amendments. Bill Rowling from the County Attorney's Office will cover the first public hearing as it relates to, or I'm sorry, cover the first topic as it relates to Board of Ethics.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chair, County Manager, and Ms. Dance. So, the first section that we went through was regarding the ethics changes. Most of the changes we did in there were just changing for clarity's sake regarding gender issues. And the result, or excuse me, the changes were as a result of Georgia Supreme Court case that came out this past August that was not specifically related to Cobb County but to Cab County, and regarding the selection of members of the Ethics Board. So in response to that, the changes included in Section 265, where we have now appointed specific elected officials that will be naming the members of the Ethics Board. I don't know if there's any other questions besides for those changes?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you, Bill. The next section relates to economic development. The only change from our prior public hearing relates to changing some wording clarification that staff will actually obtain the concurrence of the County Manager and the Chairman to extend offers of incentives. The second item relates to alcoholic beverages, and this particular item has not changed either. This allows for regulations for alcohol to be served at public facilities. This covers facilities like Jim Miller Park, the Cobb County Civic Center, Jenny T. Anderson, and the Maple House Amphitheater as well. The next item relates to Chapter 58 and floods, and this is just a clarification that no land shall be used, occupied, developed, without full compliance with the provisions in this particular section of the code. The next item relates to offenses and miscellaneous provisions. In this particular item, we've added some language here to clarify that no one can congregate or cause others to congregate on any public way, to halt or impede the flow of vehicular and pedestrian traffic after being directed to clear the public way by the police or where signs are posted prohibiting this activity. This next item is Parks and Recreation, and this is just to, again, allow the sale of alcoholic beverages at county-owned facilities as provided in Section 6184, which is what we're amending tonight as well. Next section relates to county-initiated zoning request. This just requires at the count that the Board has to adopt a resolution authorizing staff to prepare the application. Community Development has to notify all impacted property owners in writing via certified mail, return receipt requested, and this is no less than 15 days prior to the Board's The next item is simply, there are no changes to this other than to just clarify some Scrivener's notes in terms of references to the correct figure numbers, and to just clarify some language regarding the length of facades when there are multi-tented buildings involved. The next item is the University Overlay District. This item-
Hey, Michael, excuse me one second. If you go back one slide-
Yes, sir.
The slide talks about the addition of a new overlay district on Mapleton Parkway and Veterans Memorial Highway. Is that?
Yes, we got it.
I just want to make sure, because what's on the screen and what you said, I didn't hear the word Mapleton, so I'll just-
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Clarification, yes, sir. It does include Mapleton Parkway and Veterans-
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Yes, sir. And then a new overlay district. This next one is the University Overlay District up in the Kennesaw area. I think, I believe based on some feedback we've had and discussions with Commissioner Burl, this item, we are going to hold at this time, seeking holding this to give staff some additional time to explore some other options for accomplishing this. And you have another agenda item under a regular tab where we will be seeking an extension of the moratorium for applications for this zoning classification.
Since that was advertised, if someone's here to speak to that tonight, they can still speak-
Yes, ma'am.
But it is being removed and not being voted on tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
Sure. And then the last section just relates to signage. The content of signs can never be determining factor in approval or denial of an application. And with that, we would request that you open the public hearing at this time.
All right. So, we're going to ask, to open up the public hearing here, just to remind everybody, three minutes for your timeframe, unlimited number of speakers, let us know who you are and where you live. With that, I now declare the second public hearing open to solicit comments and input on proposed amendments to Chapter 2, Chapters 2, 6, 10, 58, 86, 90, and 134 of the Cobb County Code. With that, would anyone like to address the Board on these issues? I'm going to put my glasses on here to make sure that- Would anyone like to address the Board on this issue? Seeing none, I now declare this public hearing closed. And Commissioner Cupid?
Oh, Chairman.
I will not, I will take this, I'll take this and run with it until you get your book open, all right?
Okay, thank you, Eric.
So, I'm going to go ahead, just for purpose of discussion, make a motion that we approve these amendments, these revisions as stated. Have a second.
Oh, second?
Just for purpose of discussion, all right? Now we have a discussion, all right? So, we have comments from the Board about these revisions.
If you could, Michael-
Yes, sir.
Chairman, read each section that we are approving and what we're taking out or holding.
So would you like us to vote on each one individually, per chapter? Okay.
Okay.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking. I'll get the consensus of the Board here. Do you want to just do it total or by chapter?
Oh, yeah, okay. No, yeah, it's okay.
Okay, we'll do it, we'll do it all at one time. That's fine, just asking.
The notion is include what we're actually voting on and what we're not.
I just have some questions there, so I don't impede the process. And I'm sorry, I wasn't here for the reading to know about some changes that were made, so I'll just ask some very specific questions. With respect to the Ethics Code, did we strike out the reserve section that referred to the homeowners associations?
We did. And I'll point out too, Commissioners, hopefully today you got an updated version of that section and then a couple of other sections that needed to be adjusted per our conversation yesterday over the agenda work session.
That's Section 2-66.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Then with respect to economic development, Article 5, Section 2-167, is there a reference in the code that we will refer to the Commissioners? As we stated, we have a policy that requires review of all the Commissioners. Is there something to the code that alludes to that, so that someone doesn't specifically point to code and says that that should be overridden?
Not in the code, Commissioner. We have a separate policies and procedures that governs that, and I sent a copy of that out via email on yesterday. I did want to point, acknowledge in Section 2-167, 6, it says advise the District Commissioner and obtain the concurrence of the County Manager and the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners to extend conditional offers of incentives in accordance with this article.
Yes, and I'm aware of that. I'm just concerned in the instance where we do not have a Chairman as generous as ours, that without there being some text that refers to the consideration of the entire Board, that someone can look to the text of the code and not confer with all the Commissioners. So, that's-
But didn't we, the Commissioners approved policy?
Yes.
And so, that's considered the will of the Board, the same as the code change would be?
As long as that policy is adhered to as code.
It is. It is adhered to, and we can bring that back at some point if it's the will of the Board and adjust that.
Yeah, it's the will of the Board, so you're good as long as I'm here.
I'm curious to know if the other, yeah, how Commissioner Burl may feel about that.
Okay.
However, is it in the code or the policy that we vote on those as a Board?
No.
Each incentive?
But you have to approve it. But you have to approve the incentive.
You have to approve the incentive.
It doesn't matter what-
You have to approve the economic incentive commitment agreement.
Right, exactly. Yeah, so, just because two of us Commissioners agree on it, we still got to go to the Board to have the whole incentive approved.
But who, how did they come to us for a vote? Is that your doing?
No, it's-
I don't think it's, I don't think it's in the policy. I think what Commissioner Burl's at-
But we're just doing it anyway.
It says, what Michael says, is that you have to get the concurrence of the County Manager, the District Commissioner, and the Chairman. But it doesn't say in the policy, and it doesn't say in the code, that we have to vote on it. We've been voting on it because the County Attorney's told us that we have to vote on it.
And we have been voting on Commissioner Burl, or Board, we have been actually voting on incentive agreements that are legal contractual documents that we develop in accordance with assistance from Ms. Dance's office, and then those are brought to the entire Board and require at least a majority vote of the Board of Commissioners.
So they'll always come back to us for a vote if it's a contract like that?
The incentive agreements, yes, ma'am. What this particular code section will authorize is a conditional offer, which is still, it still has to be ratified by the Board of Commissioners.
Exactly.
Then that's, that's your answer. I mean, that means it has to come back to us, and we have to approve it by a majority of vote.
Correct. You have some more concerns?
It would just be the desire that we have a discussion about that prior to it coming before a vote. You know, the way that it's codified, it would allow that deliberation to occur earlier in the process, at least the way that it's stated. But I will lean on the desire of the Board that we do have that at least documented somewhere, and I'm hoping that that policy, again, still has weight that's comparable to code.
And you're all, as we all know, we're always encouraged if we think we can do a better way, and we're always willing to amend our policy. So, but I think we got all the basic, there's accountability because it involves money, and if it involves money, it's got to be voted on by the Board. So.
That's our second call.
Exactly. Commissioner Cupid?
Oh, any other questions?
Yes.
Article 5, it does include the language that you had regarding that, this is regarding the Military Airport Hazard District. I did see in the revision that there is a statement that says the Board of Commissioners is not precluded from including other factors. Hopefully that will be strong enough to signal that, as Commissioner Ochs shared, that we have that discretion.
Right. So it makes the start, that way our hands are not tied.
Yeah. I'm good. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, good. So, now you want us to go ahead and have Michael read the changes, or are we good?
Well, just read what we are approving or not approving. I mean, like, Section 10, alcohol, or Section whatever, Chapter 6, alcohol, the chapter numbers that he read out, just say what they apply to and what we're voting on to approve.
Sure. Chapter 611, 6184, that requirements for sale of alcoholic beverages at public facilities. This is the one that allows us to sell the Jenny T. Anderson, Maple House, and so forth. The next one relates to Chapter 10, Bravies Control, and this is just going back to the original standard, which was for four months. Chapter 58, Floods, Flood Damage Prevention. This just offers some clarification as it relates to no land shall be used, occupied, developed, converted, or altered without full compliance to this section. And then offenses and miscellaneous provisions. Again, this just relates to no person shall congregate with another or others or cause others to congregate in a public way.
That obstructs. That's the key thing. You can still congregate.
That impedes the-
Exactly.
Yes, sir.
We're very concerned about that we're not allowing people to freely congregate.
Right. To impede the flow of vehicular or pedestrian traffic. And the next item is Chapter 90, Parks and Recreation. That's just alcoholic beverages. This just says no alcoholic beverages will be sold, possessed, or consumed except in Chapter 6, which is what we're amending tonight, 6184. And then Chapter 134, Zoning. This, again, just talks about when the county initiates a rezoning request and what its requirements are in terms of having the Board approve a resolution, and then the notification of the impacted property owners within that area.
Okay.
And then the next one's our Article 4, Supplemental Regulations. That's the Military Airport Hazard District that we just talked about, and we added that additional language that we discussed yesterday during the agenda work session. And Chapter 134, 289, Mapleton Parkway, Veterans Memorial Highway, these are the design overlay districts. So we're codifying those design guidelines at this time, and there were just a couple little tweaks that we had to make in terms of the reference to the correct figure number in this, just for clarification purposes. And then the next one is the University Overlay District, which we have talked about holding that at this time until staff has some additional time to explore some other options for accomplishing this. And then the very last one is signage as it relates to, we can't basically turn down a sign because of its content. And that concludes all of our code amendments.
Great. Any other questions? Any other questions for the Board? Call a question. Passes five to zero. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, sir.
So with the Board's indulgence, I'd like to let Commissioner Cupid make her presentations now.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, I did want to make sure that the Board had clarified that there was a separate handout that was a supplement to what was included in the printed agenda under the memorandum from Mr. Hughes dated February 26th.
The County Clerk has a copy of that, so it's in the record. All right, Commissioner, it's all yours.
Thank you. My dearest apologies for those who've waited patiently this evening. I don't know if it was shared, I was at the Capitol advocating on a very serious matter with our county pertaining to our tenants living in some dire circumstances, and there was a long committee meeting, of which I finally had opportunity to address some of their concerns. So I truly apologize, as I do not want to take this, oh, excuse me, I don't want anything to take away from this opportunity tonight, to recognize two valuable initiatives and some important people within our community. First up, I'd like to have Mr. Juan Violentis. If you are here, Juan, how could I miss you? Would you like to have family here? Hello, Dad, how are you? Yes, how are you tonight? Good. How are you? Good to see you. Many of us already know Juan. He is a valued member of our community. We have a proclamation of which we'd like to honor his service here in Cobb County. of which we'd like to honor his service here in Cobb. Whereas Juan Vialentas is an entrepreneur and philanthropist in our community, he is the owner of Giovanni's Restaurant, the founder of Giovanni's Children's Foundation, and the owner and contractor of JV Drywall Incorporated. Vialentas embodies the American dream with immigrant parents moving here seeking a brighter future, his mother is from El Salvador and his father is from the Philippines. Born in Boston, Vialentas moved to Atlanta in nineteen ninety-one and worked from the bottom up, eventually establishing JV Drywall Incorporated. He also earned bachelor's degrees from Georgia Tech and the University of Georgia, ugh, on both sides, hello, no easy feat, there was a war within. Whereas in two thousand eight, Vialentas established Giovanni's Italian Restaurant in Osteo, it became a local favorite because of its home-cooked meals and family-friendly atmosphere, which I can attest to. Vialentas runs the entire operation from inventory to staffing to cooking, he works long hours but enjoys the work and prides himself on building a restaurant that is well-established when many other competitors have come and gone through the years. Vialentas has weathered many obstacles and challenges, including being burglarized several times, vandalism and a major mechanical disaster at the restaurant. A sprinkler system malfunction flooded the restaurant destroying virtually the entire inventory and stock. Because of his faith, Vialentas persevered through the hard times and decided to found Giovanni's Children's Foundation. This nonprofit helps poor and less fortunate families with young children in Atlanta, the Philippines, El Salvador and Mexico, and whereas Vialentas has been honored with Don Quixote National Award from El Salvador. The award recognizes the entrepreneurial spirit of people who have shown great character, strength, courage and determination like the beloved character of Spanish literature. Vialentas was also named man of the year by the South Cobb Business Association in twenty sixteen, he was nominated as small business person of the year by the Gwinnett Chamber of Commerce and the Metro Atlanta Chamber of Commerce. Vialentas is also an active member of the Cobb County Chamber of Commerce, the Marietta Business Association and the South Cobb Business Association. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners do hereby honor Juan Vialentas for his personal business and civic contributions to our community, this the twenty-sixth day of February twenty nineteen, congratulations.
For the battle of my heart, thank you so much, thank you very much, my friend, for my, the board commissioner of Cobb County, my beautiful Cobb County, exactly what I live for so long, thank you very much for the battle of my heart again, and God bless America.
Amen, thank you.
I usually don't do good on speeches, but standing here right in front of my son and watching him grow, I feel so proud of what his achievements are, and sometimes I feel though that I am the son and he is the father, most of the time, and she, seeing how he grew up so much makes me so proud of him, and thank you very much for the honor that you have given him, Lisa, everybody else, thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
Overdue.
Thank you. All right, and now if I can have representation from Lindley Middle School and the LEAP program, we're going to honor you for your work, um, with an upcoming event, we have the principal here, yay. Last but certainly not least, we have a proclamation to highlight some significant work going on at Lindley Middle School here in District Four of Cobb County. Whereas America, hello, I'm sorry. Whereas America is a country filled with infinite promise, but this promise is adversely impacted by students and parents and guardians who decide that the student may drop out of school, this decision often occurs at the middle school grade level. While state and national high school dropout rates have declined, many school systems still struggle with the number of students who do not finish middle school or high school, and whereas our national and local economies are hurt every time a student drops out of school, the Atlanta Regional Commission predicts that in five years, sixty percent of jobs in Georgia will acquire some type of post-secondary education, yet only thirty-eight percent of Georgia sophomores get that far. Reducing dropout rates is also important for the well-being of our youth, perhaps the largest cost of dropping out of school is that evidence suggests it is a gateway to incarceration. The National Education Alliance found that nearly seventy-one percent of people in prison do not have a high school diploma, an additional year of school reduces arrests by up to eighteen percent, and whereas the most current research proves it is essential to keep students engaged in activities that connect academics to career and college preparation through the middle school grades. By the ninth grade, data shows that many students who feel disconnected from school are considering dropping out. Lindley Middle School in Mabelton coordinates a LEAP, Learning About Employment and Academic Possibilities, College and Career Fair in March of each academic year. The college and career fair inspires and educates students and their caregivers about the opportunities provided by staying in school. Whereas because sixty to seven percent of students become chronically disengaged in the seventh and eighth grades, it is critical to build knowledge and interest in future career options. Lindley Middle School students are going through the process of identity formation and finding their places in the world, LEAP helps in this process by meeting all students where they are. In March two thousand eighteen, Lindley held its first LEAP program in which sixty-two employers came out, institutions of higher education along with technical colleges from Cobb County in Georgia. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim March seventh, twenty nineteen, as LEAP Day at Lindley Middle School. We strongly encourage community leaders and residents to recognize the importance of reducing dropout rates in our community and our nation. We commend Lindley Middle School for its efforts to increase awareness and help combat this nationwide dilemma, this the twenty-sixth day of February two thousand nineteen, thank you. Would you guys like to introduce yourself and we can have someone to speak on behalf of the program, start here with Bill? Okay, we're gonna pass the mic everywhere.
Good evening, my name is Dana Giles, I'm the very proud principal of Lindley Middle School, and I just want to say thank you so much to those of you who have worked so diligently for the furtherment of our children, um, middle school is not too early, as a matter of fact, it's almost too late, we want to make sure that we provide our students as early as possible with those opportunities to learn about the employability skills, the opportunities to learn about colleges and other post-secondary opportunities, and so for our students at Lindley Middle School, the LEAP program provides that gateway to success, that opportunity to start exploring what your future will look like, I am so appreciative of those of you all who work so diligently for our students each and every day, how you bring in those resources to our students and to our community, I am indebted to you, and we may not see the future, the fruits of our labor for a couple of years, but we know that we are building great potential in our students and we are molding, um, our future leaders, so again, on behalf of the staff and the community and stakeholders of Lindley Middle School, I thank you, thank you so much, uh, board, and thank you also, Lisa Cupid, for your time and investment in our school.
Thank you, good evening, my name is Bill Wallace and I have the honor and pleasure of serving as the Chair of the Cobb United Way Advisory Board, this is a project that we've undertaken with United Way of Greater Atlanta and United Way of Cobb County, as we're focusing now on the issues of child well-being, family well-being and community well-being. At Lindley, we have eleven hundred middle school children whose future depends upon those of us in our community providing concrete pathways to success, so what we've done with our sixty-two employers, we include institutions of higher education throughout the state of Georgia, we have technical college system institutions from throughout the state of Georgia, and we have local employers that range from construction companies to Morehouse Medical College, so when you talk with these children, their interest of their future is so wide-ranging. The other thing we think's unique about our program, and this will be the last statement I'll make, is that it's important for when the children go home at night, that it's positively reinforced by their parents, and one of the things we've seen is that parents are looking for meaningful employment to increase stability, to increase, uh, food security, to increase housing security, so we have Cobb Works that is present on site, that when parents drop their kids off and walk out of school, they have an opportunity to find out about employment opportunities in our community. We also wish to thank, thank our local services because we have the Cobb County Police Department, we have the Clayton County Police Department, we have the military, so we try to provide every type of range that might be of interest to a student. We thank you, we thank the community for this opportunity to serve, and we'd like to acknowledge and thank Ms. Kagan, uh, United Way of Greater Atlanta, and particularly you commissioner and all of the other members of the Board of Commissioners and all of our fellow board members, and also, last person is Mike Daly, we do a lot of work with Orange Duffel Bag, which helps homeless and foster kids seek, uh, or have opportunities for, for higher educational opportunities as well, so we're grateful for your support as well, Mike.
You Mike Daly?
Lana Waschnyak, I chair the LEAP, uh, committee, I'm on the Regional Commission on Homelessness, and I will take your business cards if any of you would like to participate, we have some vendor tables still open for next week.
James Carter, one of the advisory board members and also retired assistant superintendent from the Cobb County School District.
Good evening, my name is Deborah King, I'm president of Dublarn Associates, I'm a member of the Cobb, uh, United Way, and I chair board development and governance for the Cobb United Way Board.
Thank you, I'm Emily Wells, I'm with Kennesaw State University for almost twenty years now, and I also have served on the United Way Advisory Board, Cobb County, for about, what, five or six years.
Good evening, my name is Bob Wise and I'm the immediate past chair for the Advisory Board for United Way, and I also work for the University System of Georgia.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Roberts and I'm a proud connections teacher at Lindley Middle School.
Janet Tharp, Cobb United Way Advisory Board Member.
Melanie Kagan, Regional Director for United Way of Greater Atlanta.
Thank you, appreciate you guys being here, let's huddle up for a picture, so we'll have you come in the middle, and then we'll just. Thank you, Bill.
So now we have public comment, and we have nine speakers, so we only hear them all at once? Okay. I just thought everybody have, uh, public comment, you have five minutes, and just let us know who you are and where you live, so with that, our first speaker is Mr. Birkenbine?
Actually not.
What?
The first speaker is Stephen Gaynor.
Okay. Whoa, let's get here at midnight, Steve?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and Mr. County Manager, my name is Steve Gaynor and I am the President of the Fraternal Order Police Cobb County Lodge at twenty-three fifty Osteo Road in Marietta, I represent over seven hundred members in law enforcement in Cobb County, and we're very concerned about the state of the Cobb County Police Department and the Cobb County Sheriff's Department. As I spoke at the last meeting, I'm here again to point out the critical recruitment and retention issues facing the Cobb County Police Department and the Sheriff's Office. In the last fifty-seven days of twenty nineteen, we have lost eight Cobb County Police Officers and we're aware of at least ten more that are in recruitment processes with other agencies. I'd like to draw your attention to the chart on the screen, which you have a hard copy of, and show that we've gone through and put the numbers to the facts, and you see that Cobb County ranks very low in those numbers, we rank low because of the pay and the benefits that we provide, if you look at the chart, you see that Smyrna and Marietta are below us, however, Smyrna has a retention and they have a sign-on bonus, which kinda brings them above us because they have a three thousand dollar uncertified, a five thousand dollar certified, and if you were in the military, an additional thousand dollars, so you could go to Smyrna and get an additional six thousand dollars right away from Cobb County and be well-trained. Smyrna also pays the POAB, we have tried for months to get payroll deduction from the county for POAB and for the fire retirement plan, and we have not been able to get payroll deduction authorized because of some opinion that the union is representing here, this is for our members and for the police and fire department to have a better retirement, and I would ask that you do whatever you need to do to make the county authorize payroll deduction for the police and fire. Uh, the top of the chart again shows, uh, the lowest pay and goes to highest, the color chart shows the highest to lowest, you'll see that Brookhaven and Atlanta are the highest, there's no way we can compete, uh, they have payroll deductions, they have POAB, the sign-on bonuses, there's a step in grade for two of them, so I know we've talked about step in grade a number of times, it's time to stop talking about it and start doing it. I will point out that we do, I do have marked that Cobb County does not have a take-home car policy, but we do have one that we're working towards because for two years we were stripped of the money we had for cars, so therefore we didn't institute our take-home car policy, uh, but we are trying to catch up at this point, but it's a big, it's a big way to go. In closing, I need you to take seriously, take this seriously before an officer or deputy is seriously hurt or even killed as a result of your failure to act accordingly, as I sent you a, an email the other day with a video from Bibb County on their, uh, problems down there with recruitment, I also pointed out that put yourself in the place of that deputy or that intake officer at the jail with sixty to eighty inmates, and it's a two against sixty to eighty inmates, because we won't provide the proper compensation to attract staff, and therefore they're understaffed and we're understaffed, officers going out on the road without backup because we don't have enough staff, East Cobb citizens, the true, the taxpayers of Cobb, going three, two and three beats short every day because we don't have enough manpower to put out there for them, at some point, we're gonna be like the city of Atlanta, where we take the calls, we prioritize them, and maybe today we might come and take your theft call, or we might show up tomorrow, and so, in ending, I just ask that you take this seriously, uh, according to the Atlanta News, as I was coming in here today, there have been fifteen officer-involved shootings in the state of Georgia already this year, most of them in metro Atlanta, so this is a serious job and I need you to take it seriously, please, thank you.
The next speaker is David Birkenbine.
Falling out on your job there, Dave.
I hear you. Evening, Mr. Chairman, County Manager, Commissioner, David Birkenbine, outdoor burning, this is repetitious, I know, outdoor burning code, all it needs to be is enforced, it's a good law, it's fantastic for the safety of all citizens, you see under the article, and this is mentioned many times. You see under the article, and this is mentioned many times in the article, medical burn ban. These are the medical burn bans in Cobb County. There's approximately 46 of them, so there's 11 point something whatever for each district. Restricted burn areas, there's no restricted burn areas, these are medical burn bans. They're not restricted, they're listed as medical burn bans. The people that fill out the medical burn ban form is getting a medical burn ban of a thousand-foot radius of their residence of outdoor burning. And again, even though you follow all the guidelines in the burning, you may be required to extinguish the fire if it adversely interferes with another enjoyment of life, use of property, or if someone with health problem is affected. This is ala Cobb, this is not just for the medical burn ban, this is ala Cobb, this is for the health of ala Cobb. The applicability, the article applies to all outdoor burning, all outdoor burning within unincorporated Cobb. And down at the bottom, codes shall be controlling. This is, this is between the state laws and what we have here in Cobb County. So the code's going to be controlling in this. Clean wood, we've heard about clean wood, clean wood is natural wood, you can read, it's not been painted or plywood or anything like that, you can't burn. Logs, logs means pieces of wood cut from trees that are dried and clean of soil not to produce large amount of smoke. It's not going to be smokeless like a smokeless cigarette, it's going to still smoke, it's going to still put out this particle 2.5 pollutants out, and that pollutant stays on the ground, it stays in the air, it stays in the area, it just don't go, poof, disappears. Outdoor burning, again, means a kindling of fire where the passing, where combustion are emitted directly into the air. So you light a fire right here, all that particle 2 pollutants, all that toxins, all that carbon dioxide is going to be hanging around your house. Prohibition, prohibition, why are we going to have prohibitions if we aren't going to enforce the prohibitions? Prohibitions listed in 54-114 are intended to promote and safeguard the public health, safety, comfort, air quality, living conditions, citizen, unincorporated Cobb County. That's all citizens. No burning is allowed on windy days. Well, who's drove around Cobb County and seen smoke? Who's drove around Cobb County and, and, and just, you know, it could be right by a fire station, you just, you know, go out and find it. I mean, it affects people, it affects people in schools. Fire chiefs will be authorized to ban outdoor burning in limited geographical area, which they do. They've got a documentation signed by a doctor. These people are adversely affected by smoke, these are chronically ill people, these are kids, these are old people, these are young people, it's you, it's me. You can have penalties, and it tells you in 54-113, 114, including the violations of any total burn ban by the chief. Well, a medical burn ban should be a ban, like it was brought up last year. What were we banning? And the voices were silent, we're banning outdoor burning. So here's the violations that you could fall back on. If you don't think you can put it out without getting any legal problems, restrictions of outdoor burning do not apply to the following. And that right there, see, wipes out the whole code as far as y'all are concerned from last year. That wipes everything out, because it's allowed to burn. And it just, I just, I just, I just can't understand. I wish the other man that spoke last, last couple of weeks ago was back here today. But next month, we're going to talk, talk about how we got to this mentality of outdoor burning, not enforcing it. I didn't start with y'all, I started with the state. But back in 1994, population of 2,900, 297,000 people, what is it now, 766,000? Come on. We need to, we need to get out of the 50s and the 40s and when Cobb County was a farm community, thank you.
The next speaker is Sharon Mason.
Good evening, Chairman Boyce and Board of Commissioners. I'm Sharon Mason, I am a resident of Cobb County and also President and CEO of the Cobb Chamber, and we represent over 2,400 different businesses that are members of our chamber. And I'm speaking to you tonight about the resolution that is on your agenda regarding the transit bill extension, and I want to thank you for putting this on your agenda. I think this is very important, especially to continue to keep all of our options open, especially while the county is conducting your comprehensive transit plan throughout this year that is going to help us with even more options and more considerations for the future. And as we know, transportation, transit, and mobility are critically important for the quality of life of our citizens, for our county's future, as well as for retaining businesses and continuing to bring in new businesses to Cobb County. So thank you for placing this resolution on your agenda, and I encourage you to support and vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
The next speaker is Breon Perkins.
Hello, everyone, my name is Breon Perkins, and I'm writing to ask that you urge your colleagues on the House Judiciary Committee to hear and vote upon House Bill 346. This bill seeks to protect families living in rental units facing mold, leaking roofs, rats, insect infections, lead, Renn dog, and unsafe electrical and other conditions when they exercise their right to seek repairs and complain to code enforcement. These conditions are forcing children and vulnerable adults into the emergency rooms and hospitals across the state in high numbers. Georgia is the only state in the country that does not protect tenants against unsafe and uninhabitable housing conditions with a warranty of habitability. Many of the affect units are subsidized by taxpayers. House Bill 346 would allow Georgia to join 41 other states, including Florida, Tennessee, Texas, Alabama, North Carolina, South Carolina, Mississippi, and Virginia, that prohibit landlords from retaliating against tenants with eviction merely for seeking repairs for unhealthy and unsafe housing. Georgia has some of the highest eviction rates in the country. After eviction, families have an even harder time finding a place to live. Children are forced to change schools and forced into less stable and less desirable housing. In addition, we also request that there would be a task force formed to address the housing needs for households incomes below, below 25,000 a year. Thank you. We Thriving Riverside Ritters Association.
The next speaker is Monica Delancey.
Thank you, Monica Delancey, and standing with Breon Perkins was one of our youth leaders as well as Pamela Wright, she's introduced herself. Thank you for having a proclamation for Lindley Middle School. Breon was a student in Lindley Middle School several years ago, now she's a freshman woman in college. And I can remember helping out with the PTSA as a president with Career Day when I was there with my daughter Breon and my son Ernest. But tonight, I'm going to be speaking and reflecting about what has transpired in the past, Mom. Even though what's being addressed are the code violations in the Three Riverside apartment communities, the housing crisis is big, big. By the numbers, if you think about the Pebblebrook area, it's mostly occupied by renters. There are 25 apartment homes and mobile park homes in the Pebblebrook school zone. All of those schools in the Pebblebrook feeder pattern are Title I schools, and the definition for a Title I school is when, when families apply for free or reduced lunch, they're classified economically disadvantaged when they make less than $30,000 a year. So just want to state that. So you'll have a child that starts school as a kindergartner and go all through 12 years being a recipient of free or reduced lunch. Households are paying more than 50% of their income on rent. Rent can range from $700 for one bedroom and up to about $1,200 for a three-bedroom. And I'm talking about apartments or mobile park, mobile park homes. The Maryland Housing Authority states they give out about 3,300 housing vouchers countywide. And when talking about the three apartments in the Riverside community, there's a total of 490 units, and of those units, only 69 receive housing vouchers. Okay? So Maryland Housing Authority is paying roughly $40,000 a month of taxpayers' money for rent, and that averages out to be $480,000 a year. So that's just based on that, some of that money should have been taken to do repairs for these households. As apartment complexes are sold over and over again, there's delayed maintenance issues that get taken care of. And someone's saying, why don't a resident complain where there's leaking going on or there's mold, and why does it sit there? Well, it comes down to this, residents are tired of moving. When they move, they have to come up sometimes of $2,000 to move. So they may sit quietly and suffer in silence because of that fact. That's just from paying deposit, not including when you have to get a U-Haul truck. So you'll see people just staying there because they may not be able to get qualified to move to the next apartment because they don't make two and a half times the rent, because that's the baseline in getting somebody qualified for an apartment. So in theory, when we talk about these businesses coming to Cobb County, we need to ask those businesses, are they paying $17 an hour? Because if they're not paying at least that, then you're going to have many residents that are going to suffer in silence because they know they cannot move, because that next apartment complex is going to be strict when trying to get them qualified. And maybe that apartment complex they're staying in wasn't as strict when they applied to that apartment. So we're moving on, I just want to share what my daughter stated, that there needs to be some type of task force formed so we can address housing for people who make less than $25,000 a year. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Sonia Clemmons.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Sonia Clemmons, and I'm here to tell my story and also to figure out what we can do about the situation off of Six, well, it used to be called Six Flack Drive, but now it's called Riverside Parkway. The last time I was here, you guys might remember, that I broke down with an anxiety attack, because the situation there is so bad. There are rats, mold, non-working smoke detectors, no fire extinguishers, everything that's uninhabitable about an apartment. I ended up there because I got sick. I got really, really, really sick, and I lost my home, got a divorce, and was homeless for four months. After that time, I was lucky enough to get something, something, which ended up being Kingsley Village, that I would be able to have my daughter in the Pebblebrook Magnet School. So as, with the apartments being in a shameful condition, I always ask myself, what can be done? What needs to be done, especially to get myself out of the situation, but not only me, everyone else gets to come with me? I think that the code enforcement deals with the outside of departments, not the inside. Our problems are the inside of the apartments, that's where the rats are. What I want to ask everyone tonight is, what are the ethics of this situation? Where's everyone's ethics? Is there no shame in Cobb County? Do we have to live like this? Do other people have to live like this? If we are going to start off a meeting with prayer, and we're mostly Christians in here, where is it that we're not taking care of our neighbors, who happen to be the least of these? This is allowed to continue, and I would call people hypocrites who can look at this and let it go on. Every person in here who's decent would not allow this to go on. Also, my question is, where does this fine, where does this fine money go? Where? They're being fined to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars, but that's money that cannot go back into making these habitable households. They're uninhabitable, and I'm ashamed to live like that. No one should have to live like that, and I'm wondering where the people of Cobb County are. What kind of county is this?
The next speaker is Ron Siphon.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Ron Siphon. I'm here to speak in support of your resolution to request an extension for the, until 2022 for the district option on the transit tax. Let me also say upfront, my personal opinion is that Cobb County should not go with the district option. Cobb County should make the best effort it can to put together a transit projects list that will actually help to improve overall mobility in Cobb County sufficient that it would easily pass on a countywide vote. That should be our objective, that's my recommendation. However, with that said, it makes sense right now to keep all options open. Cobb County, at this point, is not close to being able to put together a projects list, whether it'll improve mobility or not. The transit tax survey that we just did, of the people who supported the transit tax, over 40% supported it because they believe it would improve traffic congestion. As we know, that's not automatically true, we had the Connect Cobb Bus Rapid Transit Study, where the study itself admitted that if that project got built as proposed, it would make future traffic congestion worse than if we do nothing. So we need to actually work on putting together a transit projects list that actually will contribute to improving mobility. That's what the citizens of Cobb County really were telling you that they want. So that can be part of the comprehensive transportation plan process, and that's part of what is going to be part of the comprehensive transportation plan process. That's not even going to be completed until the end of 2020, and I think there will be further work to do on the specific projects. If we really want to make this be a projects list that actually will contribute to improving overall mobility in Cobb County, it's going to take y'all until 2022 to have such a projects list ready to put forward to the voters. And I will also say, if you rush this and put together a projects list that won't help to improve mobility, we put Connect Cobb on the ballot as an example. I think that, I think you can interpret from the, from the transit tax survey, I don't think people are going to support a projects list that is, is going to make traffic congestion worse. We've got a lot of work to do to get to the point where we've got a really good projects list that we can present to all of Cobb County, that Cobb County will support. So bottom line is, keep the district option open, I get it, you will absolutely need until 2022 to be, to be ready to move forward with this. I support your resolution, thank you.
The next speaker is Lance LaRusso.
I'm Lance LaRusso, I'm an attorney. I have a business in Cobb County, I'm a Cobb resident. I'm a Cobb resident. I'm the general counsel for the Georgia Fraternal Order of Police, and I also represent the Cobb County Lodge. I heard the Commission, the last time I was here, rightfully get upset about living conditions at several apartment complexes. And no one should have to live under those conditions. You agreed to act swiftly. But I did a little research. I wanted to know what the conditions were outside those apartment complexes. What type of crime were these same residents having to deal with? What were they reporting and asking for help with? At Parkview Apartment Complex in two years, this is not counting zone patrols, these are case numbers pulled, there were 65 case numbers, Riverside 148, Hunter's Grove 91 case numbers, and at Kingsley Village, in a two-year period, they pulled 166 case numbers. These were not for minor crimes. Armed robbery, robbery, burglary, dangerous drugs, sexual assault, false imprisonment, carjacking, child molestation. These are people that are trying to make ends meet, as you heard, and when they're out in the parking lots, when they're out in the area, they're becoming victims of crime. We need more law enforcement resources to protect these citizens who call 911 to report these crimes at the apartment complexes. Some of the crimes, if you look at the stats, are going down. That's because Precinct 2 is the only precinct that we're trying to staff full-time with as many people as we can, where we've got people in Zone 4 going four and five beats down. And it's not uncommon for the precincts to be several beats down every day. We've been raising concerns about staffing for several years. And what was the response of the Commissioners? You pulled resources, sworn deputies and police officers from a shorthanded jail and shorthanded precincts to guard your own offices. There's going to be no prosperity without public safety. And all of you, and I've spoken to you, I think there's one or two I haven't had a chance to speak to directly, say that you stand for public safety. You need to do something quickly to preserve our public safety resources. I just don't understand why this is so hard. I'll give you an example. We were talking, Mr. Gainer was talking about payroll deduction. There's a state benefit that officers can contribute to, and firefighters contribute to, to help their pensions. We've been trying for years to get a payroll deduction for that. Can't get it done. We've been trying for years to get a payroll deduction done for officers and deputies to contribute to a legal defense plan, so if they use force, or they're called on the carpet for something, they can use that to defend themselves. Can't get that done. And it's no wonder we can't get other things done. That just takes a vote and a signature. City of Atlanta does it, Fulton County does it, several other jurisdictions do it. We've been asking for years, and all we've heard is silence. And now, you're not even returning some phone calls. That's why we're here. You need to take action now to stop the attrition and help attract the best and the brightest. We hear a lot about Cobb leading the way. If you want to go, make Cobb County the most attractive place for public safety, to retain the most, the best and the brightest in public safety in 159 counties in Georgia. You have the ability to do that. But if we keep going the way we're going, you're going to watch your resources bleed out of the county. And we heard somebody talk about $30,000 and how difficult it is to live on that. Starting salary for a Cobb County police officer is 40. That's not much above that. And if they can't find a place to live in Cobb, then they're trying to commute from Paulding and Cherokee. People are taking your resources. As a business, your Public Safety Division is failing. Thank you.
The last speaker is Malcolm Platt. Have you come forward?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Commission and other officials here this evening. I'm here to speak about the poor living conditions brought up at the last Commission meeting two weeks ago and as well at this meeting tonight. We have something called the International Building Code, International Fire Code, International Gas Code, International Electrical Code, International Plumbing Code, and International Residential Code. Okay? They cover single, double, and multiple-family dwellings across the world. Cobb County Code, Section 18-121, has adopted this from the Georgia Code, the official Code of Georgia annotated 8-2-25, as the full building code of Cobb County enforced by the Cobb County Community Development, among other laws as far as the development is concerned. What I'm finding is that there is a lack of communication, not only in Cobb County, but across Georgia regarding this international code, those six sections that I just named. I don't believe new laws are really needed at this time to get these property owners and complexes to do what they need to do. For example, at my complex, there were several things going on outside and inside my unit. I had complained for months, at least two and a half months, to get them to do what they needed to do, and it fell on deaf ears. On Friday at 9:30 in the morning, I sent an email to the Marietta City Development, Code Development Office. At 10 o'clock, I got a return phone call. I got an appointment set up for 1:30 that afternoon by the inspector, and by 3 o'clock that afternoon, several things had already been scheduled or fixed in my unit, inside my unit. Those individuals at my complex were cited. They had 72 hours to get certain things done, 60 days to get other things done. I'm on the schedule to get my apartment completely done by the end of this week. The reason I'm saying this is that if we, first of all, as a county, get this information out there, maybe we can use the existing laws to get these communities off Riverside Parkway and elsewhere in Cobb County to do what they're supposed to do. Maybe we could have a liaison, or several liaisons, whose duty it would be to contact individuals throughout the county in these communities to let them know what rights and things that they have at their disposal to get these things done in their favor. These laws cover structure. They cover heating, plumbing, natural gas, and pest control, roaches, rats, and et cetera. Okay? Maybe this Commission could set aside funds to establish a mailing program that mails out literature twice yearly to known tenants in the county, people who may have relocated here. We can call on several databases, such as voter registry, things of that nature. I don't have the details worked out. But contact individuals who are new in the county, who have moved in the county, to let them know what they have at their disposal to get these communities to do what they need to do, to keep these dwellings livable and habitable. Maybe the Commission could send a director to Information Services to make this information much more visible on the county website, and make the website much more user-friendly regarding important information like this. One individual said that code enforcement deals with the outside. That's simply not true. What we have on the books at the state level and at the county level deals with the outside and the inside of all dwellings, all properties, like I said, single-family, double-family, and multiple-family dwellings. So I'm just here to ask this Commission to consider what I've spoken about regarding the current laws on the books, getting this out to the people in the community, making it public knowledge, making it widespread knowledge, possibly recruiting a few individuals whose job it would be to disseminate this information so that we can make a change for the better regarding these deplorable living conditions in Cobb County. Thank you.
Okay, let's take, let's take a five-minute break.
Mr. Chairman, before we take the break, if I could indulge, I have a video that I was going to show with Commissioner's comments about a program that Michael Murphy and I have been working on, that actually deals with some of what we just heard in public comment. And I, we're going to take a break, and I don't know how long these ladies are going to be here.
Okay, let's do the video first.
So just kind of as a background, Brad, if you could put up the pictures. These pictures are from the most recent apartment complex that Star C bought. I am a member of the Advisory Board, and back 10 years ago, Margie Stagmeyer came with Madison Hills Apartments, which are on Delk Road, is now called Stratton Ridge. This one's actually been renovated inside, but we had similar conditions, deplorable conditions, units that have been condemned, a failing school at Brumby, this is Margie inside, so hold on a minute, Brad. Transit rate of 86% at Brumby Elementary School, and basically a stack of crime reports about a half inch thick. Margie came in and they bought the property. We worked together to renovate the properties, keep them at moderate and affordable housing prices in the $500 to $600 a month range, and started an after-school program. Brumby's transit rate went down to 41%. It was dropped down to four pages of crime reports. Margie, we had a ribbon cutting today because we have come full circle, and Stratford Ridge, which is now the new name for Madison Hills, reached out to Margie and Star C and asked them to bring the program back to Stratford Ridge. And so we had the ribbon cutting today, but Margie informed me today that she is actually in discussions with the owners in Canada of the apartment complexes that we've been hearing about down on Riverside Parkway, and attempting to bring this same program down to there. And so just imagine that this is how they started, and now the video's going to show you what we had today. This complex used to be called Madison Hills, and Margie Stagmeyer had a, had a vision about, you know, we had a school at Brumby where we had 86% transit rate. Came back to this apartment complex, which was 10% of the population, and created an after-school program that was incredibly successful and was kind of instrumental in lowering that transit rate to 46%.
What was here was family, right? So my big thing is community building. I grew up in a strong community, and so I wanted that for the kids that we worked with. So partnering with Dr. Ritchie and her staff, they were super amazing in just supporting us, and we prayed.
This is the inside of the after-school area.
And to be safe, and to know that they were loved.
And Dr. Ritchie, I mean, it had a big impact on the school.
Yes, it did. They did thrive, and we saw our scores go up, we saw our discipline go down, our group of kids that stayed with Ms. Kristen every day. She was their extra mom. She would come out to school and say, do you have your homework? Do you have all your work done? You have a test tomorrow, get your book. And she would remind them that they had to study and do their homework, and it was such a great thing. She also had Girl Scouts and a lot of activities.
We had some of everything here.
We did.
We put in the after-school program, and it partners with the school. So we have a free after-school and a free summer camp, so the children aren't latchkey kids. They can come to a program and be in an environment that helps them with their Georgia milestones and with their homework, so they can thrive academically.
It's great to have you all back, and I know everybody's excited, so.
Very excited.
Yay!
So I just, I just wanted y'all to see this because I was really excited today when Margie told me that she's talking to the property owners for the apartments down there. So hopefully, very short time, we're going to have another video and see this down there.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, so let's take a five-minute break, then we'll come back to the rest of the agenda. Okay, so let's take a five-minute break, then we'll come back to the rest of the agenda. Move to, first of all, let's scroll through the consent agenda, so everybody at home and here can see what we're voting on tonight.
And, Mr. Chairman, while we're doing that, I just want to acknowledge the fact that, and I'm not sure it was sent to all the commissioners, and I don't remember if we sent it to everybody, but I received letters of support from the Cumberland Community Improvement District, the Cobb Chamber, and then Council for Quality Growth in support of the 930 resolution.
Okay. And again, just to remind everybody, item twenty-four was withdrawn from the consent agenda for tonight. That was on the agenda as that we were discussing yesterday, agenda prep. So if you have the old book, it'd be number twenty-four.
Could also say something about number ten, because I had questions yesterday about why it needed to be back pay. And in my discussions with the county manager today, in the courts, the chief judge is picked every two years, and so that was done in December.
Right.
And so in January would have been when they would have brought this forward, except that back in January, the thought was that they could actually have used it from just in their regular budget. But the county manager and Judge Green talked about, in the interest of transparency, to bring it forward as an agenda item, which got it to this timeframe versus it having been taken care of in January. So the reason it's back pay is it could have been done back in January, but in the interest of the citizen seeing what's going on, that's how come it took this long.
Okay, great argument. Okay, with that, I move to approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize the execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, just one.
Okay.
I'd just like the clerk to note that I'm not supporting item number twenty-one due to the service issues associated with that annexation.
Okay. You have that for the record? With that, I'll call a question. Passes five to zero, except with the opposition's noted by Commissioner Cupid, right on number twenty-one. All right, under regular, so first we'll start out with DOT.
Good afternoon again. We'll start with our first item, and that is to request that the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under OCGA thirty-two dash three dash four, and authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on seven parcels on Windy Hill Road, Terrell Mill Road connector, adopt resolutions and orders in form substantially similar to those attached, and is approved by the county attorney's office, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Rock.
So moved.
You have a second? You have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by county managers authorizing emergency repairs on Fox Lane in response to sinkholes, approve project number X twenty-two fifty-four to the twenty-eighteen county-wide unit price contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents for said repairs, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Rock.
So moved.
You have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Paulette Tucker Enterprises, Inc., DBA Tucker Grading and Hauling, in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-nine-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars for Balesbury Road sidewalks.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Second? Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Paulette Tucker Enterprises, Inc., DBA Tucker Grading and Hauling, a savings to the project in the amount of three-hundred-and-nine dollars and thirty-four cents for drainage system repairs on Glendale Drive.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
You have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Accelerate Construction LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of nine-thousand, four-hundred-and-ten dollars and ten cents for Kenton Road sidewalks south.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Second? Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
And a savings.
Yes, ma'am. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve project number X twenty-seven fifty TO number one to the twenty-eighteen master task order contract with Heathen Lineback Engineering, Inc., in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty dollars for engineering design of Ken Jack Drive sidewalk.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Second? Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve X twenty-seven sixty-six dash TO one to the twenty-eighteen master task order contract with Southeastern Engineering, Inc., in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand, two-hundred-and-five dollars for engineering design of Buckner Road sidewalks.
Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. These sidewalks have been long awaited. For those covering the Mappleton area, would love for you to note that this begins the process for getting sidewalks on both sides of Buckner Road. But with that, motion to approve.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of an infrastructure for rebuilding America or an Infra Grant Program application to the U.S. Department of Transportation for construction of Acres Mill Road Managed Lanes Access Phase Two. Designate Lorraine Vance and Erica Parrish as the authorized department representatives for all matters associated with the Infra Grant Program application, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Rock.
Okay, third time's a charm, right?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
We have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners authorize procurement of a closed-circuit television cameras and associated license slash software support at a total cost not to exceed one-hundred-and-two-thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars for incident management.
Commissioner Rock.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. And our last item is to request that the Board of Commissioners authorize the sole source procurement of professional services from Arcatus in an amount not to exceed twenty-five-thousand dollars for further development of the geographic information system crash analysis tools, project number E fifty-fifty, and authorize procurement of computer hardware in an amount not to exceed sixteen-thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and forty-eight cents for and further authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
Commissioner Rock.
Motion to approve.
Second discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Erica.
Good evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners and County Manager. Three items tonight. First is to authorize purchase of one replacement aerial ladder apparatus and three replacement engines from Pierce Manufacturing for fire and emergency responses. Three pieces of apparatus, three engines and one ladder have reached their useful life with Cobb County Fire and Emergency Services. The replacement vehicles are presently under the GPO contract with ten-eight fire and safety equipment, ladder truck costing one million, four-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars, and three engines, each running six-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. These units have all been approved by the county purchasing, and funding is available in the FY nineteen fire fund. Cobb County therefore recommending the Cobb County Board of Commissioners authorize the purchase of one aerial ladder apparatus and three replacement engines from Pierce Manufacturing for fire and emergency service or fire and emergency response in the amount of three million, four-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Our second item is to authorize WHP training towers for repair renovation of the current fire training tower pursuant to the county's two thousand and sixteen SPOS. The Cobb County Department of Public Safety and Cobb Fire and Emergency Services was authorized to proceed with several capital projects. One of those projects is the renovation and repairs to portions of the current DPS Training Center on Valor Drive. Built in nineteen ninety, the current fire training tower at the facility requires repairs to be safe and completely operational. This project will enable the county to continue to do best practice training in that facility. The estimate supplied for the repairs should not exceed two-hundred-thousand dollars. Once funding has been allocated for identified projects, Fire and Emergency Services will bring forth subsequent agenda items regarding the awarding of bids, contracts, and specific projects as required. Funding is available in the two thousand and sixteen SPOS. Therefore recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize WHP training towers for the partial repair and renovation of the current training tower with the expenditure of two thousand and sixteen SPOS funding, program X ten fifty, in the amount of two hundred thousand at the Department of Public Safety Training Facility, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Motion to approve. Second discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
And my final one tonight is to approve a sponsorship agreement with Glock, Inc., authorize the acceptance of sponsorship contributions, and approve the construction of the Glock residential house at the Cobb County Safety Village. Currently, the foundation is seeking to construct an interactive residential house and received one hundred thousand dollars from Glock as sponsor to support the construction. The project is estimated to cost eighty thousand to construct and finish out the interior of the house. For second graders, the house would be utilized for gun safety measures and what to do if you come across a firearm. The fourth grade students will go over safe neighbor, contact, safe place, and gun safety. The house is roughly twenty by thirty in size and will be constructed by Cobb County Property Management Division. Should the completed project realize a savings, any remaining funds would be returned to the Safety Village Foundation. Therefore requesting the Board of Commissioners approve a sponsorship agreement with Glock, Inc., and authorize and accept sponsorship contributions of one hundred thousand dollars. Approve the construction of the Glock residential house at the Cobb County Safety Village to be performed by the Cobb County Property Management Department, and authorize a corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Motion to approve. Second? Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Sam.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. We have two items on the regular agenda. The first is to direct staff to extend the current suspension on the acceptance of rezoning applications for purpose-built student housing to provide staff additional time to prepare new regulations recommended in the purpose-built student housing study. By way of brief background, this study was presented to you this past September. The study analyzed the current state of student housing in Cobb County and provided some recommendations on policy and regulatory guidance the county should consider. In October of last year, the board extended the suspension of the acceptance of the applications for purpose-built student housing to allow staff time to develop a proposed ordinance that implements those recommendations contained in the study. After preparing a draft ordinance and receiving some feedback from affected citizens, community stakeholders, and individually the commissioners, staff has determined it needs some additional time to refine a proposed policy regulatory solution. With that, we are seeking to extend the moratorium until July thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, or until new regulations are approved by the Board of Commissioners, whichever is sooner.
Commissioner Cupid. Okay.
Oh, because it's community development. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion? We have a second?
We have a second.
We have a discussion?
Yeah, we did have a public open house for this, and we are not ready to move forward. So we've asked that they be extended, and we're looking at other options as opposed to the overlay district, which we took out of the code tonight, code amendment package tonight. We will be having additional stakeholder meetings and public meetings prior to July thirty-first, or when we do code amendments in May and June. Thank you, Michael.
Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Second item, sir, is to direct staff to suspend the acceptance of all applications for off-premise signs until June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, while staff reviews and makes proposed amendments to the signed ordinance. Unless such amendments are submitted and approved by the board prior to that date, by way of brief background, in September, the board authorized the suspension of all applications for off-premise signs until March thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. The moratorium contains wording such that it expires when such a change to the code is approved. As a change is contemplated with the February code amendments, more specifically Section one thirty-four dash three twelve, the moratorium expires on its terms. Staff is therefore requesting some additional time to take a look at those code provisions before they are presented to you. With that background, we request your approval.
Commissioner Cupid.
Okay, so moved.
You have a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Thanks, Michael.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. We have one item for finance tonight, and that is to authorize a discretionary contribution to the Cobb County Employee Pension Plan for FY nineteen. The contribution will come out of the county's health fund. The pension contribution represents an eligible use of these funds. We're asking for a discretionary contribution above and beyond the required contribution. The discretionary contribution would be in the amount of two million dollars. So with that, we're asking the Board of Commissioners to authorize a discretionary contribution. So with that, we're asking the Board of Commissioners to authorize a discretionary contribution to the Cobb County Government Employee Pension Plan in the amount of two million dollars, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Second discussion, call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
All right, and then the last one is resolution to support House Bill three oh two.
No, I oppose.
I'm sorry?
Actually, it's.
Opposing, I'm sorry.
And, and Mr. Chairman, the clerk advised me that the resolution has indeed been revised to reflect House Bill three oh two and Senate Bill one seventy-two.
Okay.
So do you want me to just?
Please, go ahead.
Just by way of background, this has gotten a lot of attention. The Commissioners have gotten a lot of emails about this. The concern, at least when I brought, suggest bringing this forward, is the fact that, in my opinion, it really smacks in the face of local control when you, the state wants to put in place basically a regulation that removes all the ability of local jurisdiction, whether it be county or city, to have any say in how properties are developed. And there's been a little bit of misunderstanding on it, and I think one of the biggest things besides local control is that every Commissioner up here spends a lot of time and effort in working with the community and the developers in generating letters of stipulation, agreeable stipulations, both between the the county and the developer. And in my discussions with the county attorney earlier today, there are only two exceptions that this change in the law would not apply to, and that's homeowner association covenants and contracts between property owners and the seller, the purchaser. It specifically does not mention, and so my, one of my other concerns is the fact that if, you know, we're told that if a developer voluntarily agrees to stipulations, that those will be in place, but the concern is that if, in midway through a project, and we've had some cases come in front of the board with this, where the developer just says, I'm not going to do this anymore, or we get a change in ownership, a new developer, and they said, I'm not going to follow these. The way the law is currently being presented, the board would have no recourse to ensure that those communities were developed in that format. So with that, I make a motion to approve the resolution regarding House Bill three oh two and Senate Bill one seventy-two.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Commissioner Burrow.
Yeah, I agree. Not only does it take away local control, but it would be, to me, a disaster for a community and surrounding neighborhoods, where you could get a mix match of anything and lower-quality homes next to higher-quality homes and devalue the properties surrounding that. So in support of opposing House Bill three oh two and Senate Bill one seventy-two.
No comments?
Yeah, just echoing the sentiments of the Commissioners, this is a position that is not only shared by us on the board, but by Commissioners of our Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, that it does impede local control, and it really takes away our ability to to help ensure that all communities are protected through quality building, and that's reflected through the materials, through the design of homes, and other conditions that this seeks to regulate. So I stand in support, not only with our, my fellow Commissioners on the board, but with Commissioners across the state in opposing this bill.
With that, I'll call the question. Passes five to zero. All right, I believe that takes care of the agenda tonight, so I'll start with Commissioner Cupid for comments.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to encourage people to please go to my newsletter. We have a number of events coming up. The most significant thing that we have is coming up on the twenty-seventh tomorrow. We have a large water project through the Cobb Marietta Water Authority, which is going to impact South Gordon and Cardell Roads, and encourage members of the community to go to the South Cobb Recreation Center to learn more about that at its open house from six thirty to eight P.M. tomorrow. Tomorrow, I'll also be resuming my community zoning meetings, where we'll be discussing upcoming cases. We actually have two applicants which will be present, and we'll also have discussion from Habitat for Humanity in addressing their approach to housing in the district. So if you can't attend, I encourage you to do so, and that meeting will also be tomorrow at the South Cobb Community Center at six o'clock P.M. Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes, I'd like to remind everyone that we have our next parks meeting at six thirty P.M. at the West Cobb Senior Center, and we will be specifically discussing the property, the thirty-three point three acres that was purchased on Anderson Road. And then on March fourth, we will have another meeting, and it will be held at the West Cobb Senior Center. This is where we will discuss mitten bike use and Lost Mountain Park. That meeting will start at five thirty, followed by the previously scheduled parks meeting for the Leon Hall Price Park property. At six thirty, the location has changed. It was originally going to be at the West Cobb Regional Library. It will be moved to the West Cobb Senior Center as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. I first like to say thank you to the approximately a hundred residents that attended the Ebenezer Road Park Public Meeting last week. We appreciate your ideas and input. We got some really good feedback, and thanks to the Noonday Baptist Church team for hosting us, and to Jimmy Keacey and his staff for working to bring this together. It was a great event. Also, a shout out to Mike Nichols of our Cobb Senior Veterans Group. He's, in the past two weeks, he has put together two outstanding programs. One featured a World War One historical writer and researcher who spoke about a U.S. Army secret mission out of Marietta that involved the A.J.C., Selective Service, the I.R.S., and more. Last week's program featured Brad Quinlan, who was a Civil War historian and author, and was seen on NCB series, Who Do You Think You Are? Thank you, Mike, and Cobb Senior Veterans for such fascinating speakers and program. If you're a veteran and would like to learn more about the Cobb Senior Veterans Group, And now we have a picture of a ribbon cutting. Congratulations to the Davis Direction Foundation for the grand opening of the Rezone Boutique Thrift Store. All proceeds benefit the foundation, which is a resource center and safe haven for those seeking to find and maintain recovery from substance abuse and addiction. Missy Owens and her husband here have done a great job with this center, and now they've opened another thrift store with furniture and really some beautiful items and good deals. So you can go to re-dash-zone-dash-thrift-dash-store dot business dot site for more information. Okay, now we have another veteran adoption at the shelter, Cobb County Animal Shelter.
I was going to say.
Who adopted who?
That's right.
Or who rescued who? This is Mr. Schleicher. He's a six-year veteran of the Air Force, and he adopted this adorable little dog last week. This is adoption number seventy-nine out of a hundred in the Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets Program. Thank you to Superior Plumbing for your generosity in donating the adoption fees for our veteran heroes, and thanks to Cobb County Animal Services for your compassion and caring for each of these homeless pets. We only have a few more left, so if you're a veteran or you know of a veteran who wants a forever best friend, you can go to the Cobb County Animal Shelter, sign a form, and pick out a dog or a cat free of charge. Tomorrow, February twenty-seven, is Coffee with Your Cop from three thirty to five at Newks at seven forty-five Chastain Road in Kennesaw, and that will be with Officer Fernando Farr from Precinct One. And then on Thursday morning at nine, we are having Coffee with Your Cop at Janus Overbeck Real Estate Team at twenty forty-nine Roswell Road in Marietta, and that will be Precinct Four, Officer Natalie Chegg. So come out and talk to our police and learn some great safety tips. Next Wednesday, the sixth, is the Chairman's Town Hall at the East Cobb Senior Center. You can come and discuss the budget, transit, whatever's on your mind. And it will be at the East Cobb Senior Center, Wednesday, March sixth. There will be two town halls, one at three in the afternoon and one at seven P.M. And there are flyers in the back table with the locations and time and schedule for all the town halls that the chairman will be doing in the next week or so. And next Friday, March the eighth, you're invited to Keep Cobb Beautiful's Tree Planning Event to beautify and protect the school playground at Bell's Ferry Elementary School located at twenty-six hundred Bell's Ferry Road in Marietta. It will be Friday, March eighth, from nine to twelve, and you, for more information, you can visit keepcobbbeautiful.org. We recently completed some intersection improvements, and so this will be to help push a screen around the playground at the school, Bell's Ferry Elementary. Thank you, that's all I have.
Commissioner Rott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have two more things. Well, first off, I want to congratulate Stephen White again for still regal. The first one I have, and you know, we talked about how great our employees are, and it's always really exciting to receive letters like the two I have here. So the first one, the office received a concern about an issue on Windy Hill Road on January sixteenth, and then about a week later, on the twenty-fifth, we got an email back from the person who sent it, and it says, Mr. Rott, it popped in my head that I never closed the loop with you on this. David called me to discuss the situation with a couple hours of my inquiry. That's David Baggot, who is our DOT ambassador. It is encouraging to me that I got that kind of response so quickly. I appreciate your help and David's transparency on the issues. I'm in this business and understand the challenges that come with it. Keep up the good work. On another note, I've been dealing with the Cobb County Fire Marshal and the Building Permit Department recently for our office space. I work with jurisdictions all over the country, and I've yet to come across one to date that has given me the level of customer service, information, and great attitude that Cobb County has provided, from folks at the desk to inspectors in the field. The entire process could not have gone better. Very proud of our county staff and hope you can pass this along to management. Folks in particular from the Fire Marshal, Isaac Juarez, Chad Collins, Jeff Baxter. Folks in the Building Department, Julia Drake. Gentlemen, I believe this name is David, and has glasses and a ponytail at the permit desk. So I don't know who that is, but whoever you are with the ponytail, good job. The other letter I have, and this is from State Representative Eric Allen, and this is actually addressed to Quincy Stevens, who is the CO of First Transit. He writes, Dear Mr. Stevens, I would like to commend you on your service to our community and our citizens. Last week, February thirteenth, I was traveling behind your bus, number sixteen oh nine, as you pulled off from the Cumberland Transfer Station. Shortly after pulling off, you stopped your bus and exited. Not sure what was going on, I stepped out to make sure everything was okay, and what I saw truly touched me. There was a fellow citizen in a wheelchair that had become stuck on the curb. This was not only a danger to the individual, but to oncoming traffic as well. Your actions to assist this individual were not only selfless, but also encouraging. Encouraging to see the best of humanity in action, and taking pause in your duty with Cobb Link to be of service to Cobb as a whole. It is with pleasure that I write this letter and commend you on the work that you are doing for the Cobb County. I also thank the supervisor at First Transit for assisting me and my staff with making sure we connected with you. It is my hope that at some point in the future, I am able to meet you personally and shake the hand of a hero. Thank you and be blessed, Representative Eric Allen.
I'm not even sure I want to say anything after that, so I'm just going to simply say on your screen as this schedule of the town halls, if I have my sanity at the same time that this ends next next month, it would be my own fault. So with that, we're adjourned. So with that, we're adjourned.